It's 6 o'clock. Should we make a motion to begin the meeting?
Yes. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, very good. Sorry about my dog. Sorry. My dog made a third motion to start the meeting. So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Sorry, guys. She's a puppy. And I need to read the script. As a preliminary matter, Mary Kay Decourcy, Chair of the Auburn Public Board of Trustees, permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, sorry. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Suzette Dowd?
Yes.
Great. Nan Johnson?
Here.
Great. Jen Lee? Shay, sorry, not here. Paula Melikin?
Yes.
Matt Toth?
Yes.
Mary Kay Decourcy, I'm here. APL staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins is here. Very good. Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the Auburn Library Board of Trustees. Excuse me for one second. I'm just going to shut the door.
Good idea.
So sorry. My dog, I have a new dog who's very noisy. Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Auburn Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment. And those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Auburn Public Board of, Library Board of Trustees is convening by go-to meeting as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless otherwise noted. And then finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. If we have any technical difficulties, as we did last week, I will suspend the meeting while we make attempts to resolve the problem. I also want to welcome, we have guests tonight, our Assistant Town Manager, Ed Kazanovich, and our Town Manager, Julie Jacobson. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks, Mary.
No, really appreciate it a lot. The first item I have before we hear from Ed tonight is the meeting notes from the last meeting, which was January 6. Could we just look over the meetings and decide whether we want to approve them?
I make a motion that we approved them as, because we've had them since last week.
Do I have a second?
I second that. Yes.
Great. Great. Is Nan Johnson?
Yes.
No. Do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. And Paula Melikin?
Yes.
And Matt Toth?
Yes.
And I support the minutes. The second, the second item on our, a third item on our agenda tonight, we have Ed Kazanovich. Am I pronouncing your name correctly? He's been kind enough to come and to talk to us about the proposal and an update on the proposal, as well as the financing update. Ed, you can have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you got the Ed right. The last name is Kazanovich.
Oh, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Kazanovich. Thank you so much.
That's better.
Eddie, are you the Assistant Town Manager?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I thought you had a finance title.
I do. I actually wear three hats. Assistant Town, Chief Financial Officer and Town Accountant.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And Madam Chair and members of the Board of Trustees, we're excited to present to you tonight a finance plan that will allow us to accept generous grant from the Pappas Foundation for $505,000. So we needed to come up with our match. I will go through those details with you. And it's going to require some town meeting action. So we are prepared to submit warrant articles in order to release some of these funds that will meet our obligation in, under the grant. So our share is about $505,000. This plan does identify $503,000 to scrape up an additional $2,200 in order to make this plan work. Julie, do you have that too put up there? And I don't know if...
Ed, I sent it to the board last week. So, yep, so they have that. And for the board members, it's toward the back. I think it might be the second to the last page of that document. Eddie, right now, I'm not a presenter, so I can't...
Okay, that's okay. If they have it, it's part of their packet. That's fine. They can follow along in their fashion. So I'm going to go through each line item. So we've identified approximately $406,000 and some change by way of available funds. And I will itemize that for you. So we have sale of real estate, $8,791.77. There's a mass...
Can you tell me where we're reading from? I don't see it.
Proposed financing...
The heading should be Proposed Financing Plan for Local Match.
Okay. And we're getting these numbers from estimated library sunroom addition cost? No.
No. The next to the last page.
Estimated project cost?
Yep, behind that. Flip it over.
Okay. Yep, I got it.
You want to have it?
Yep.
So starting from the top, sale of real estate, then we have a mass tent pro tanto award. Now, all of these need to be voted by town meeting as available funds. $6,314.40. We're using $100,000 from the sale of Mary D. and JB. It was $50,000 each. That's $100,000.
What a ripoff.
Now, before I go on, I just want to say we were able to do this without taxing the residents one dime. So this is all done through available funds. We had an ASOLA legal agreement. This was rarely a reimbursement for legal costs that we expended in order to effectuate that agreement. That is now available for other uses. We have a balance in our FEMA, snow, 2018 storm. It's reimbursement from the federal government, $16,127.30. We have approximately $147,236 remaining in our free cash certification. Our financial policy allows us to use 50% of the net gain over the prior fiscal year. We are proposing the one-time use of stabilization funds of $80,000. We are proposing the use of interest earned on the norma card principal trust of $12,912. That was a balance as of June 30. This currently $13,000.
Does that mean there'll be no other projects funded by norma card? Going to use all of it?
No. We still have $120,857.2 in the principal amount. We put that in the trust. And we still have about $800 left in the interest account that we're not using.
Nice. Really nice.
And we are proposing one-time use of overlay surplus of $25,000. The total of that grouping is $406,381.47. Below that, we've identified library projects. These are bonds that we incurred for library project purposes that has not been expended to date. We have a balance in the library windows account, $1,256.45. We have library window project, $21,076.91. Library HVAC that we never used, it was part of the capital plan, $35,000. There's a balance in library foyer account, $9,826. There's a small balance in the library interior paint project, $182.98. And the school department is committed, because they understand the importance of this project. They're releasing $30,000 that they had earmarked as replacement windows in Randall School. Now, we're proposing the use of those library projects, first and foremost, because those are borrowed funds. In accordance with the borrowing statute, those funds needed to be expended within a two-year period, or the IRS could say you're in violation of arbitrage borrowing issues. What does that mean? It means if we don't repurpose those funds, the IRS can come in, they can charge us penalties and interest for sitting on that money without expending it. So whether we use it for this project, we would have to repurpose it for something else, because we can't run the risk of putting the town in that type of exposure. So the total of those two groupings, or those funding sources, is $503,723.81. So we're asking your support. We are prepared to submit warrant articles. The warrant closes on Monday. We are prepared to submit warrant articles to meet our share of that match to guarantee the $505,000 grant commitment as pledged.
The one's right here. So, and imagine that if I'd use my phone, I couldn't be talking to you. I'm using my little iPad. So goodbye for now.
Nan, I think that's coming from you.
I'm sorry. I just left the room.
Your mic's on. Nan, your mic's on.
Wouldn't you know, I just left the room. Yes, of course, I support this.
Okay.
Well, I have a question for Ed.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, the $12,000 you mentioned are the norma card. That's interest that's earned. It's not, that's all the money. It's not touching the principal.
That is correct.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
That's wonderful.
So I think this is, I think this is good news. I think we, Julie and I tried to put together a plan that didn't rely on additional taxation from our residents for this project. We indicated that as a priority to the Pappas Foundation as well. And I think through this plan, we're able to take this to town meeting and do exactly that. So I hope you will support this, because we're moving forward in our efforts to put this on the warrant. That will be, and the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen will also take a position on these articles as well.
Does anyone have any questions or commentary?
No, I think it's an excellent use of those unexpended funds. Super.
I agree, Nan.
And a lot comes from the library. A lot comes from our own funding, so it's really perfect.
I agree, Nan.
And we also, if I may add, with discussions with Julie and Jean, we also repurposed some money in the capital plan that was identified for the replacement of the boiler that was done on an emergency basis this year. We are going to supplement funding through maybe some outside enhancements. Once the addition is put on, and certainly we'll, we can have some discussions about that. But it has been identified in the capital plan for FY '23. It's either '22 or '23 for this library project as well.
Very good. Nan, can you turn off your mic? I think that it's coming from you. There's a lot of background noise.
Thank you. I will.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions, commentary, or Julie, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yeah, through the chair. First of all, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and present this plan. And I really want to thank Ed. I can't tell you the hours and hours and hours that he's put into this to come up with this money, to, as he said, to protect the taxpayers, to come up with a reasonable plan that we, you know, when you think of it, the library portion of the project is about $300,000 just for the addition. We didn't, and the grant is paying for 50%. We know the library, it would have been very difficult to come up with a whole $150,000, your match of it. So we thought by cobbling all these funding sources together from all the other areas, and especially with the help from the schools, and, you know, some of our free cash, that we're able to offset your portion of the 50% from the library. Because again, that would be a heavy hit to come up with 150 all at once. So I think it's a great plan. I think, you know, with your support also, we know that we can, well, we know, we know we can do a good job selling this, and we hope that town meeting members will support it as well when the article comes before them. We're probably going to have a couple, at least one, meeting for town meeting members before the town meeting, you know, town meeting, just to present what you have all seen, you know, present the whole plan, present the financing plan, so they understand when they get to town meeting what it is we're asking them to vote on. So, you know, there'll be opportunity for the public to have comment and listen and understand. But, you know, we're excited. We just think this would be a tremendous project. So I want to thank Ed for that. And I want to thank Jean, because she helps so-called scrub the accounts, looking at the accounts, what will we need, what won't we need. So I think it's a great plan. Again, we thank you. And thank you again for having a meeting again this week instead of last week, because our warrant does close on Monday. So we didn't really want to put this off and go forward on the warrant without the opportunity to talk to you.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Is this, Julie, do we, do we need to vote to approve this? Or are we just...
You know, it would be nice if you did, Mary. It would...
Okay, very good.
A level of support if the board could take a vote to support the entire project and the financing plan. I think that would help get it through town meeting as well.
Very good. So can I have somebody give a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve. The plan is presented by Mr. Kazanovich and Ms. Jacobson.
Very good. Paula, do I have a second motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Nan. Matt, I heard you. Suzette, do you approve? Sorry, Suzette, do you approve? Can you give me a thumbs up? And I support it. Sorry, Suzette.
Thank you very much.
A little background noise. Thank you. So we have unanimous.
Thank you very, very much.
And Ed, thank you so much for presenting tonight. I know that you need to run to another meeting, but I didn't, wanted to give you a chance if there's anything else you wanted to say.
No, I just want to thank the entire board for supporting this. It means a lot, not only to town administration, but I think to the community on a whole. This is going to be a nice addition, a nice asset. We look forward to it being erected, installed. It's going to complement the park. I think this is just a win-win for everybody. So, Mary, thank you, and thank you to the members of the board. We appreciate your support.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Jean. Before we move on to the next item, which Julie will present, can I ask you, Nan, do you mind just muting your mic? Because there's some back, and I'll mute mine. Very good. Thank you so much. So I'm going to turn the agenda over to Julie Jacobson.
Mary, I'm just, I'm just not sure what you want me to present.
Well, I think, I think we presented you with a letter, and I know that you were kind enough to review the letter and to respond. And we all received your letter in return. So I just, whether you have commentary that you want to add or that you want to highlight, and then if the members of the board have any questions or concerns.
Understood. Thank you. I just, I wasn't quite sure what. So I'm not going to read the entire letter. You know, we will...
No.
I think that would take too long. I would say that the letter would be available. Anytime you have documents that are attached to your agenda, you make them available through your website. You know, we can work with the IT department on that. As a matter of fact, I'm glad to hear you talked to John. He is one of our newer employees. He's done a great job. He's only been with us for a couple months, and he's just picked it up right away. So between he and Mike, we really have a great tech team. So thank you for saying that, Mary. So the letter that you all have in your packets is a response to the letter that you had sent, just so the public knows. You had sent me a letter dated January 6, and then I sent you a return letter dated March 2. And just in summary, if I can, I hate to summarize your letter for you, but in a way I will, so I can summarize what I responded to. So the Board of Trustees' letter had quite a few issues that have been outlined in the letter, related to the authority of the Board of Trustees, whether the town manager could change or add to that authority, and with specific reference to whether the Board of Trustees could be involved in the hiring, evaluation, and management of the library director, and specifically, and whether I could do that either on my own or through the reorganization plan. So I think I captured most of what the Library Board of Trustees was asking. You know, please, it's your letter, so please fill in if you feel I missed something. So that, those are the general points. So what I did with this letter is I took every one of the questions that you had in your letter, or the issues that you raised, and I put it in bold, so you would understand what I was responding to. So I can just briefly go through. So the first one, the board thought that the reorganization plan and the charter changed their role and reduced some of their authority. So the basic answer is the reorganization plan doesn't do that at all. The charter is what does that. So under the Auburn Town Charter, which was amended in May of 2009, the role of the Board of Trustees, as well as many other boards and commissions in town, was changed from a direct oversight of departments to all of the town departments, other than the school department. It falls under the authority of the town manager for operations, administration, and that includes hiring, personnel matters, collective bargaining, all those things. Under the charter, went under a town manager. So previous to that, when I first started, I had to do a reorganization plan. That was part of it. So the reorganization plan was really just developing the structure of government as the charter dictated. So just to give you an extreme example, when I started, the highway surveyor was an elected position. There was no DPW. And there were maybe six or seven different departments that are now divisions under DPW. So the reorganization plan followed the town charter. But if there's any language in the reorganization plan that's inconsistent with the charter, then the charter prevails under the law and under the charter. The charter prevails. So over time, occasionally, we have to make an adjustment to the reorganization plan, because that was done in the first three months of the new, of me being there, being, I was given three months to put this whole thing together, based on the charter deadlines, that it had to be done by May, May of 2011. I started January 30. So there, a couple of times, we've seen some language in there that needs to be corrected. But the reorganization plan is not the guiding document of the town. The guiding document of the town is the charter. So I just wanted to make that clear. So the charter was the one that changed the authority and roles and responsibilities of many boards and commissions in town. As I said before, before the charter, there were, I believe, 25 different departments in town, and many of those departments reported to a board or commission, you know, including, I think, the senior center, the library, the sewer commission, the parks commission, the recreation commission. Many of them reported to, at that time, an elected board or even an appointed board. And the charter changed that, to have a centralized form of government for transparency, for efficiency, for sharing of resources, and for accountability. So the charter dictates how the structure works. So that kind of answers a couple of the other questions in the board's letter. But I'll just mention, so the second one was, we recognize the documents give authority and responsibility to the town manager to make changes in structure and governance when needed. So I can't make changes that are inconsistent with the charter. So as long as, you know, I could create a commission, I could abolish a commission, as long as the charter doesn't say that that commission needs to exist. So whatever is done, so for instance, we've created, we created a public safety facility advisory committee. So that's not in the charter. So under the charter, I can create that kind of committee, because the charter doesn't dictate otherwise. So the answer to that is that I don't have the authority to make changes in governance if it is not consistent with the charter. So the overall guiding document that I have to follow, I am hired to implement, follow, and have no choice. But I think it's a good document. But I'm saying, even if I didn't, it's not up to me to make a change. I'm there to enforce the charter. So I can't make any changes to anything. The reorganization plan, I can propose a change, and we do have several changes that we are going to propose to the Board of Selectmen coming up soon to the reorganization plan. So the language under the Library Board of Trustees will be modified, so it becomes very clear what the roles are and what the responsibilities are. We have to add a couple of other things in there as well that we've done over the, you know, over recently. You know, we've added some new people. We've added some new divisions. So just to keep it all clean, we were going to do some amendments to it anyway. So I think the other point was, the Board of Trustees was looking to see if the town manager could give the Board of Trustees any authority in the oversight of the, I'm going to just specify the library director, but that would, that would say all employees, of employees, hiring, evaluations, anything like that. And the answer is no, that can't happen. And I go back to the charter that puts, under Section 3.06, puts that responsibility under the town manager. And it is my understanding that that, you know, that was to centralize all of the departments in the town. So other than the school department, all departments fall under the authority of the town manager. The town council, Robert Henigan, has, I think I'll use the legal word, opined, but he has provided an opinion to the Board of Trustees twice now, once in 2012, and once in September of this past September 2020, that addresses a lot of the questions that you asked. And I know that first letter that was sent to me in July wasn't technically voted on by the board, but Attorney Henigan answered the questions anyway, so you would have information. So my letter to you does include a lot of the quotes directly out of town council's letter, which is the legal opinion on the questions you asked. And those are in italics. And then if you just skip down, that pretty much covers number three and number four of your letter. And then the board is asking in the end, we think you're the only one who could recommend and approve changes to support and help the public library and BOT function in an effective, positive, productive, and peaceful manner. And in closing, I would say that I also want this to be an effective, positive, I'm reading the quotes, productive and peaceful manner, but I am required under the law to uphold the law. And the law of Auburn's government is its town charter. That is its governing document. And I am required, amended, to follow that, as are the board. So I hope it's been made clear now what the roles and responsibilities are. I know we had this similar discussion in 2012. We had it again, maybe in 15, we came before the board with town council, labor council, and then last, I think it was April, we had labor council again come in with a list of roles and responsibilities, the board, the library director, and the town manager, just to clarify what those roles are. And those, you know, those don't change. That is dictated by the terms of the charter. So we two want to have a great relationship, all of us, town administration, the library director, myself, the employees, Ed. We, you know, we all want to get along and work together with you. We're, number one, I want to say, we're so excited about this potential project with the library. And we see good things on the horizon happening at the library. This is one of the things we're going to do to implement the strategic plan. So we thank you and, you know, credit all of you for putting together a strategic plan and giving an outline to us that now we're required to find ways to implement the strategies in your plan. And I think this project coming up implements a number of the strategies that you identified in the plan. So it's a great partnership. And I think as long as, you know, we can work with the board, you can, you can let us know what your priorities are in the plan. We'll let you know if that's the year we can do it, based on finances or not. You know, we know there were a couple of things we've talked about that the board had identified in the plan you wanted to get done. Couple things, several things on all levels in the town, kind of got put on hold with COVID and financial issues and personnel matters. But we hope when COVID's over and we start getting back to what we call a new normal, although I've heard some people cleverly call it the now normal, because now this could be our normal, right? We don't know that. So we just look forward to working with you and having a productive relationship. And I think as long as everyone respects each other's roles and responsibilities and understands that, you know, I can't change that, that hopefully we can work together. Again, we've got this great strategic plan now that you worked on. And now... And now on our end, on town administration's end, we're spending a lot of time finding pieces of that plan that we can implement now. Kind of the low hanging fruit, what can we do now? The larger hanging fruit, the big piece, is this major development project. And I think that's, you know, that's one of the things that we're going to focus on in the next couple of years is to get this done. Because we feel it's really important for the library. It's important for your patrons. It's important, it's very important to your strategic plan. So all of that is what we're trying to do, Mary. We're trying to work well with the board. I know the board probably is disappointed that I can't make the changes that you've requested and I, I, I'm sorry, I, I can't, I'm sorry. But I hope it's clear why I can't do it.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Matt. Yeah, I think you're on mute.
Basically Julie, you're saying you have no authority to assign any responsibility anywhere in the town.
What I'm saying is I have no authority to assign a responsibility. The board of trustees specifically asked me to assign. I, I can't, the statement you just made is a blanket statement. I absolutely have authority to assign certain responsibilities. As long as it doesn't conflict with the charter. The responsibilities the board of trustees outlined in their letter, I do not have the authority to do. But that doesn't mean I don't have authority to do other things. But I can't do anything that conflicts with the charter in any department.
I just have a few things I'm going to say. They'll take a couple of minutes. I've read all the materials we've received from the town attorneys over the past five years. Regarding the lack of any oversight authority or responsibility for the board of trustees. I'm not incapable of understanding that the charter and the reorganization removed almost all of the usual role. Granted for library trustees from the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 78. Unfortunately, the board of trustees was not a part of that charter reorganization process. Or we might have been able to salvage some useful role for the board of trustees. I want to be clear, and I now realize that the town manager will not assign or share responsibility. And believe she has no authority to the board of trustees regarding the Auburn Public Library. After five years of conversations with the town manager about the deteriorating situation that the board of trustees found itself with the library. And the work I tried to do with my conversations with the town manager to make the relationship with the library better. And the town manager not being able to or not having interest in making any changes. In the relationship between the board of trustees and the library. You received our letter, which I told you was coming, describing the frustrations we've experienced over the last five years. When you received the letter from the board of trustees last summer. A simple telephone call to the chair stating that the town manager had no interest. In sharing any responsibility or authority with the board of trustees. We could have avoided the subsequent investigation, intimidating, anxiety for board of trustees members. It's no stretch to interpret the responses. It is what it is. Why does any idea that a member of the board of trustees suggests find a black hole in response? When the board of trustee consistently requested certified librarians in the library, which we were told we couldn't even use the word librarian. We had no support from the library or the town manager, but only statements that these people were not available. How do other libraries find directors with public library experience? People with an MLS, an MLIS, children's librarians and other certified specialists, but we can't seem to find them. Or you do, we can't seem to keep them. It's impossible to even get a response saying, I'll think about it or let me look into it. With six board of trustee members, I believe there are some very good ideas for a community library. We actually proved that through our work on the completed strategic plan, although we have no ability. To be sure of the way it's going to be implemented, not even the right to make suggestions. Where does that leave us? The only place I have been able to see a way for the board of trustees to be returned. Is some semblance of use and value to the community and actually the library would be through a charter change. Since town council believe that the reorganization changed anything. Nor does the town manager have the ability to assign responsibility or tasks to us. As the town manager, can you tell us what steps are to begin the process of restoring the library? To a functioning valuable asset to the community under the guidelines from Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 78? Through a charter change? Reading the information from the town Auburn charter, the MBLC and from the states, doesn't help us with the first steps in the process. Do we have to start with the board of selectmen or the town meeting? Where do we start? And what information can you give us to help?
Very good.
Through the chair, if you want me to respond, just a couple of things, just to clarify. Thank you, Matt. And again, I, I, I think I've shown to you over the last 10 years, I've tried to work with the board. There are some things that the board has asked me to do that I just cannot do. But those things I can do, I have done and I will continue to do. But I do want to clarify a couple of your statements, Matt. You said that the charter and the reorganization removed the responsibilities of the board. And I just, again, I want to be clear for my letter, the reorganization plan did not remove any responsibilities. It's purely the charter, which Matt, you did say at the end that it is, it is just the charter. So I just want to be clear on that. And again, I also want to be clear, Matt, when you said the town manager will not assign responsibilities or cannot, the second part of that is true. I cannot, but it's not that I will not. I cannot. And there is a big difference. I, I cannot. So I am responsible to the charter and to upholding the charter. And that's what I will do and will continue to do. But I would also say that some of the issues that you just raised, again, that goes back to personnel matters. So there are reasons that we don't discuss personnel matters, employees, qualifications, resumes. We can't do that. Under this, under this structure, we cannot do that. And the board cannot do that. And I know that's frustrating for the board, but unfortunately, that's the reality. The board can't do that, nor can other boards and commissions do that with employees. You're, you're not the only ones. Other boards and commissions can't get involved in personnel matters. Matt, to, to your question about the steps to restore the library through a charter change. I would have to talk to town council and get the process. I wasn't here when the town went through the initial charter. So there are a number of different mechanisms under state law for amending a charter. And I would have to get that for you. I, I wasn't prepared to do that. I didn't realize I was going to be asked to do that. So I would have to talk to town council. I, I would have to also find out how the process was done the first time through the town. And if legally it has to follow that same process again, or if it follows a different process. Those are legal questions related to a legal governing document. So we can certainly find that out for you. But I, I don't have the answers for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that response. Go ahead, Matt. Go ahead.
That we cannot talk about personnel matters. Don't you think it's absurd that a library board of trustees can't talk about the fact that we'd like to have librarians in the library? You honestly believe that we're not allowed to say that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. You just, you're just muted again. It's a little tricky.
So I, I heard, I heard up to Matt saying, don't you think it's absurd? And I'm sorry, his screen froze. So Matt, could you just repeat? It, it's absurd that the, it was about.
Board of trustees cannot honestly talk about the fact that we'd like to see librarians run a library?
Right.
That's the part absurd that we were told we're not allowed to use that word because it's a personnel issue? That that's not a global enough concept for a library board of trustees to have some interest in? And we're not allowed to talk about that?
Well, I, I would tell you that town council and labor council have both given a lot of warnings about how that is discussed. I think broadly, I think they've all said that as a broad statement, you can say, we want to see the library, you know, attract qualified personnel. I mean, that's a broad statement. When you get into specific statements about the people that you want us to hire. That is outside of the authority of the board of trustees. And whether I think that's absurd or not absurd, isn't the point. The point is that is what the, that is how we have to operate. The personnel decisions can't be under the board of trustees. It cannot.
It's, it's the recommendation to you from the board of trustees to hire librarians. That's a recommendation that we ought to be able to make to you.
You have made that.
Okay.
You have made that. I, I think where the difference is, Matt, the board of trustees has made that very clear. But when it comes time, when it comes down to how that happens, if that happens, when that happens. That cannot be a discussion that I am allowed to have with the board of trustees. I'm not allowed to have that discussion. And I, I'm sorry, I feel badly that the board feels that that's not right. But that's what the, that is what the law is. I have to follow the law. So you, you have made that clear. You've said it. You've said it in your strategic plan. You've said it to me privately. You've said it publicly. I've heard the message. But what I'm saying is I cannot tell you how or if or when that's implemented when it comes to specific personnel. Because those are personnel matters that I'm not allowed to discuss, nor is the library director.
So the only option is a charter change to be able to do something with, to be able to have a voice in that.
If the board of trustees wants to oversee the hiring and the staffing, then that would be.
That's not the issue.
No, that's not the issue.
So, so I guess I'm not following the question then. The question is.
To say something to you that has some meaning. The final approval, it's clear, comes from you. We participate with you to be able to make that happen. In the end, we're not deciding it. You are. And that, that's the part I don't understand how it can't be in that relationship with you to be able to say those things out loud.
Well, I guess the point is you already have said those things. The board has said it, but they've put it in their strategic plan. Matt, you have said it. You've said it to me privately. We've had a lot of meetings. Please don't say that you haven't said it because you have and I've heard it. But what the difference is that I can't, I can't involve you in how to implement that. I cannot. That the implementation of that with regard to personnel, the board can't be involved in it. You've made your feelings very clear. You've made your goals clear. And then how that is handled when it comes to the actual employees is the thing that I can't talk to you about. So I think maybe the disconnect here is you, you did say in a broad sense, you can say it, but you can't specify. Which employees you want to have degrees, which positions you want to have degrees. That's getting into personnel matters. That's actually getting into collective bargaining matters. And that's where labor council tried to help the board understand that last April when he came in. And I know the, the board wasn't too happy to hear this, but the answer is you're, when you cross the line into collective bargaining issues, we have a problem with collective bargaining. So I'm always aware of where that line is and how to do it. So I heard what you've said. I've heard what you're looking to do. We know that, but I can't involve the board, nor can Jean, in the actual hiring or implementation of that.
Julie, you could say to the board of trustees, I am looking for someone who's a certified librarian. You can say that, or you, you're not allowed to say that to us?
I can tell you, I've heard what you're, what the board would like. I can't tell you what I'm doing with regard to hiring. I can't do that. I can't tell you for which positions. I can't, I can tell you broadly, and I'll tell you right now, we want to hire the best employees we can. And I can also tell you, I believe we have hired the best employees we can. And sometimes employees don't work out. And when it doesn't work out, they either leave or we have to have a relationship where, where it works out that they do leave. So not every employee we hire is going to work, but I will tell you, we have a very strong hiring process. And we do our very best to hire the best fit for the library. And we look at a lot of things. We look at qualifications. We look at education. We look at experience. We look at personality. We look at ability to learn, ability to be a team player. There are a lot of things that we look at as the hiring authority. So I, I understand the one thing that you're looking at, but I hope you understand the 10 other things that we have to look at as well. And if we get an employee that has all of that, Matt, of course, why wouldn't we hire somebody who had all of that? But just one specific thing does not make for a good employee. And that's where I'm trying to talk in general terms. I can, I can never talk in specific terms about certain positions or certain employees. But I can tell you, our goal is always to hire the best qualified and the best fit for the job, depending on what the job is. And there are a lot of different jobs in the library. Not every position is going to have the same requirements or skillset or qualifications.
We've never had more than two or three people who were certified librarians. I guess, I'm going to stop now, but the, the only thing is. I cannot have, imagine having this conversation with the school department saying, well, we're going to hire the best person, whether. He or she is credentialed as a teacher really is not significant. I mean, we need the very best person to come over into the classroom, but those qualifications, that background is really not essential. And so that is, that's where I find it absurd, but I'm going to stop talking and I'm sorry, Mary, that I take.
No, no, not at all.
I'll just respond to, I, I wouldn't compare it to schools because if there's a requirement for something, we have to follow the requirements. So we're not going to not follow the requirements. If there is a requirement for certifications, requirement for education, we are, we will follow those requirements. So I, I just want to assure you, we do that. And if we, if we have positions that require certain training certifications, we make sure that the employees get that. Or if, or we have to hire them when they have it. We, we follow what the requirements are and we'll continue to follow what the requirements are. I, I just want to assure you. Same thing, if the school department was required to have certain certifications, they're not going to hire someone if they don't have that. Unless there is any opportunity for them to do so and get training. I don't know. I'm, I'm not familiar with the school system. But I can tell you on the town side, we have a lot of positions that require a lot of, of qualifications and skills. And we check that when we hire, during the hiring process.
Thank you, Julie. Does anybody have any other commentary or questions for Julie? Go ahead, Suzette. Sorry.
I have to say, after I read this letter, the response from Julie, I felt like the board of trustees was disposable. Not needed, unnecessary. That's just my own opinion. I mean, it felt like, no, you can't do anything and you've done your job doing a strategic plan and now we don't need you.
Well, again, I, I'm going to, through the chair, I'm, I'm going to respond and say, my letter never said that we don't need you. My letter said that there's, I had to respond to the request specifically of the board. For certain areas that you wanted to have authority, not all areas, but certain areas. And that's what I responded to. I, I think we've made it clear, there is a role for the board of trustees. I think your, your number one role, if, if you don't want to talk about the strategic plan. I think that was an important thing, but your number one role is to advocate on behalf of the citizens of the community. And you did that through the mechanism of a strategic plan. And you know, hopefully it gets updated every few years to reflect those needs. You advocate for the library. You advocate like, like tonight, taking a vote to support a project that's advocating for the library. So I, I believe that you have a role. It may not be the role that this, the individual members of this board of trustees would like to have. But that is the role that is assigned to the board. I, I think it's important. I know, Matt, you and I have had a lot of conversations over the years about, well, why is there, you know, why do we have a board of trustees? If the board of trustees can't be involved in certain things? Because I think there's still a role for the board of trustees. It's not the specific things that you asked me to give you authority for. But I still believe that there's a role. You're, number one, all of you are committed to the library. You are committed to your community. You wouldn't have run if you weren't. You want to be a part of the library. You want to see good things happen for it. So why not continue to advocate for the library? Encourage people, let us know, as you did through the strategic plan and others, what areas that you want us to start focusing on. Matt, to the broad sense, you want us to focus on, on degrees. You want us to focus on maybe certain programs. You want us to focus on maybe the middle school population. All those things are things that the library board of trustees ought to be discussing and bringing to our attention. And then it's our job to start to find a way to implement it. So Suzette, I, I feel badly that you feel that way, but I had to answer the letter, the specifics in the letter, and I stuck to those specifics. We weren't talking about general responsibilities of the trustees. We were talking about specific responsibilities. And that's what I tried to focus on. Generally, me personally, I believe there's a role for the board of trustees. That's why many communities still have boards of trustees, even though the operations fall under the library director and a town manager. They're still a board of trustees for a reason.
Thank you, Julie. So, so do I understand in summary though, that you will look into the process to, if we wanted to request to change a portion or part of a charter? You'll, you'll get back to us on that?
I will. No, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that. I'll, I'll get in touch with town council. And I, I said, I believe there's two or three mechanisms for doing that, but it's very complicated legally. And I, I just need to find out how, how that would happen in Auburn, specific to our charter here. So yeah, as soon as I get that information, I'm happy to share it.
Very good. Does anybody have anything on that item before we move on to the next?
Mary?
Yes, go ahead, Nan, I think.
Yes. Yes.
Go ahead, Nan.
Was there anything coming from town manager regarding the warrant and the Auburn Library Board? Or any mechanism of the board?
Did you hear that, Julie?
I, I did, I'm not sure what.
Okay.
I, I, hi, Nan, it's Julie, I'm just not sure what the question is, if the question is, is there a warrant article related to the Board of Trustees? No, there is not, um, I, I, I didn't sponsor anything, I don't know if the Board of Trustees did, but I don't know what the warrant article would do, um.
Right, right, if, if it has to be.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure out, my mind's just clicking.
If it has to be a charter change, then a warrant would never suffice.
Okay.
That's my understanding, Nan, right, yeah, a, a, a simple warrant article on a town meeting, uh, you know, and again, I don't want to speak to it because I don't want to give you the wrong information, but I believe this has to go to a ballot question of the voters. And there's a whole process before you get to that, so it's not, I don't believe it's as simple as just the town meeting, although town meeting, if, if you went for a legislative change, I believe they have to vote to file legislation, and then, and then you're looking at the whole state legislative body. So that's what I mean, there are many different ways to do this, but specifically right now, uh, there is no, there is no warrant that's been proposed to open up the charter and change it, to change the role of the Board of Trustees. I haven't sponsored that, I, I wouldn't, I mean, that wouldn't be my role to do that, I, I, my role is to implement what's there, not to change what's there.
I thought at one point, uh, it was mentioned that several other boards needed to be revised or changed or something.
Uh, that was already done through the charter, uh, at the beginning of the meeting when I was talking about it. So when the charter changed in 2009, several other boards and commissions that previously oversaw employees no longer actually oversaw the operations, that, just like you, just like this board, that happened when the charter changed. When the charter changed, that authority from many boards and commissions, um, was, was changed to, uh, most likely to the, uh, to fall under the town manager, because other than the school department, under our charter, the town manager oversees all the operas, operations and administration. But before that, Nan, that wasn't the case, uh, I can name at least four boards or commissions that changed as a result of the charter, uh, in 2009. But that wasn't done by a, a warrant article, and that wasn't done by me.
Okay, okay, thank you, it's a shame we weren't, uh, included by some representation at the time of the initial charter change then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from any board members? Okay, so the next item, Nan, you provided us with a descriptor, um, and I wanted to, to, to hand that over to you.
Sure.
Yep.
It was, it was just a preliminary, uh, description of the board, and, um, I'm hoping that people will add their own thoughts and corrections, if you will. In the first paragraph, the board organizes in May and June, and I think we decided the election in June, uh, resolved, and then we had a meeting in June to choose our, uh, officers, so that made the correction. Um, I was trying to add something at the end of that paragraph, the board reviews and actively supports the director's budget request. I was trying to, um, say some of the things that we've been discussing tonight to ward off, if possible, any future trustees' expectations, because we are, I say, very limited. We have the, the policy and the advocacy, and other than that, we really have no power at all. And I think it's important for future trustees to realize they would have no, uh, input in those areas as well. Thoughts?
Thoughts from the board?
I have some thoughts, Nan, but I think I've thought enough for tonight, uh, maybe. Time.
Um, well, I'm happy to leave it as it, as it is, um, I think we had a few other statements about what the town, uh, manager can do and where that power lies. So we can add something in there or, or not. Think about it, and we can.
You also had a question, oh, sorry, Nan, I apologize. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, yeah, my question was, you, when, when we talked about this, when you sent this to me to add to the agenda, I thought that you had a question about where we were going to have it posted, or to get recommendations from our library director or the town manager about where you would want, where you wanted it to be posted?
Yes, uh huh, or where it was available for present, uh huh.
Yeah.
That was, um, oh, all right, when the notice of the meetings is posted, and I think we've got that now on the, um, Auburn Town website, so that's for the meeting, but where the description itself is posted, I would like to see it on the, um, library site, because there's already, uh, a heading. I'm, I'm forgetting now, staff and trustees, or there, it is there, so just include it. And certainly put it on the town website additionally, people would go to one or the other, depending on their own preference, I guess.
Nan, I have no problem with that, I believe that we discussed this previously, I don't know, it's probably several months back. So obviously, I think that would be, uh, fine to post that under the, um, staff and trustees site under, um, you know, we, and everything. So I have no problem with that, once it's approved, I don't know who has to go, you know, go through for final approval, but, um, I have no problem with that at all, I'm happy to post it there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Who's gonna post it? Who's gonna post it, is it gonna be Jean posting it, is it gonna be Mary posting it, is it gonna be the town posting it?
I, I was thinking it was Mike.
If it's on the library website, that would be me, and if it's on the website, I'm guessing Julie approves what's posted on there, and then she gives the directive to Mike, I believe, I guess Mary, um, Julie can speak to that.
Yeah, that's correct, uh, Jean handles the posting on the library website, um, you know, the physical, actual doing of it. I, I don't post it myself, but either Mike or John would do that, and, and I, I concur, I think it's great to have it in both places. You know, a lot of departments don't have two websites like that, but the fact the library has its own web, website, I think it's great, because then it links back to the official town website, so it should be in both places.
Thank you. Another point, another point, please.
Go ahead, please.
I had some, uh, confusion on the actual, uh, terms for our trustees, and it seemed like we've got three people with terms in 2022, and I'm not sure how that came about. Maybe, maybe Mary, yours was a one-year appointment, so, it, on my records, I've got three in 2022, and that's, that's not possible. I'm a 21, so there should be another 21 with me.
I think, I think, I'm, I think I was appointed for a year, and I was elected for a year, so I think that that's a mistake. I think I'm, my term is up in, uh, 2021, in May.
Oh, oh, all right, that, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, I can, I can get to town hall and, and figure it out, but I wanted to at least run it by you. And then it's possible through what, to have our trustee minutes available online, I'm not sure the mechanism for that.
All right, I was muted through the chair, do you want me to respond to that?
Sure.
Yes, please, please.
Okay, so, um, so I'm sorry, Nan, I think I, I heard, again, I apologize, my screen just froze quickly, did you say how to put your minutes online?
Right, we'll submit them through, through your office and again through the library.
So they are posted, once they're sent to the town clerk's office, they're posted on the town's official website, there's an official website for minutes and agendas. Um, and, you know, if you wanted, we could figure out a way, and that would be through Mike and or John, to figure out a way to put a link from the library's separate website to the town's official site, but we have to keep our minutes and agendas in an official location, um, just for public records laws and things like that. So they are posted, they're there, and, you know, if it's easier to have a, a link on the library website that links back to the site on the town where they're all kept, we can do that, too.
Super, okay, when we finally get a, a definite copy, we'll have to figure out exactly who gets what, then, good.
Yeah, but if you're interested in seeing it now, you can, you know, all of them are online, all the, you know, on our website, there's a whole, there's a whole records area.
Yes, yes.
There's a tab for agendas and meetings, so everything gets put there, and now, because of COVID, we had to have a new tab, you know, remote meetings. So then there's another whole section where everything that's handled remotely, like all the correspondence that we discussed tonight, has to be available online to the general public.
Okay, one last item, since we're talking about terms, I do want the board to be the first to know that my term expires in May, and I will not take out papers again.
Okay.
So please, um, understand that we can recruit on our own, we can search for people that we think would be, uh, valuable on the board, and I, and I hope we will have someone, uh, come for the election in May. That's sad, Nan.
Yeah, makes me sad.
Well, I'm sorry, Nan. It's been more, more than, more than 20 years, I've been on this board when Joan Noonan, um, tried for, uh, addition to the library in 2000, so it's been a long time.
Thank you for all your service, Nan, that's amazing.
You've been very supportive, um, appreciated.
And I will continue, and I certainly will continue that, absolutely.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you, I, I'm sad to see you go as well, um, especially 20 years of, of knowledge.
Oh, it's not to be, yeah.
But tha, thank you, that's, that's a huge commitment.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Nan, um, so the next item, the next item on the agenda is the director's report. Jean?
All right, so you've had a little while to look at it, and I did send a couple of things, just that were just some sort of, um, you know, some couple of things to change, but I'll go through this briefly. Um, ceiling tiles in the children's room under facility, uh, we kind of put a halt on it, there was, uh, earlier, there was gonna be an earlier, um, open date, and we wouldn't have been able to do that. Um, now I'm still waiting to see if they'll be over, the open date is, is not a hard date, but we still probably have a few weeks, so we might still be able to get that done, DPW's pulled in a lot of directions, so not sure if that'll happen or not. One thing that is, I'll be sending a picture next time, is the Vox book section, we're very excited about our Vox book section. Um, it's where the magazines were in the children's room, DPW built a new bookcase to fit in there, so we could really spotlight those books. Um, they're, they're great books, we're only, one of only three libraries who have them, and we made a concerted effort to, um, you know, to collect the whole, well, almost the whole, um, you know, the collection that's available now, and it replaces all those books with the old cassette tapes and everything, those who've been weeded out. So I really think, um, we have a couple of people who know about them, I haven't actively promoted it yet, because we want to just make sure everything's ready, there's some cataloging challenges and so forth. So I was talking to somebody outside today, who I keep seeing, she keeps borrowing them, and I said, well, I guess kids like them, she just absolutely raved about them. And after how she knew about them, she said, well, just by accident, so, um, but we will, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, have, I would like to have a really substantial collection, and then promote it and tell people how to get to them. You can actually look to see the ones that we have there, if you go to the browse, just the basic browse, and enter juvenile Vox audio, and that will bring up all the titles that we currently have, the last I looked, it was 140, but Pat might have gotten some more in by then, and I just placed another, another order for some additional ones. So we really will be the only library that has a really full-fledged, really robust collection, and there's a nice spot now for the children to be able to go there, just to that section, and be able to, to look at the books. So I think they're phenomenal, and, um, I, so we kind of spotlighting that in the children's room.
Comment, please?
Go ahead, Nan.
Yes, Nan.
I, when I saw this in the minutes, I really wanted to have, uh, an experience with them, so I just kind of randomly chose one, and I really was impressed, the audio for the little Indian story taking place, that was with a little bit of an Indian accent to it, and it was just charming to hear it in the story.
Yeah, thanks, Nan, they're really, I, you should all borrow some, just to say, there, there's some of the titles, they're great titles, and a lot of them are, are Newberry Award-winning titles, um, really well-constructed books, they're, they're really great, so thank you for trying it out, Nan, glad you liked it.
I did.
So updates on operating hours, I guess we'll just kind of put a stall on that, because we're not really sure yet, and that would come from, you know, the town manager and, and the, uh, Board of Health, and just kind of pulling all that together, so, um, I'll give you an update when we have one on those. Um, the tax forms outside, been very busy, people pull up, they're very happy to be able to get the forms and the booklets. Um, they don't have to make an appointment or anything, they just come and get them. Um, we do have that divider there, which I gave you a picture of, so we really left them out 24/7. We've had no issues, except for the wind that took the, that really big wind, and then we got a crack in the plexiglass again. But other than that, um, it's worked out really well, and people are very appreciative of it. Um, we started the copier services, and we've had some people request it, very grateful, I know one man, White, he didn't know about it, but I happened to see him outside when I was putting books out there, and he needed some, uh, some information from a manual for a job that he was trying, he was pursuing, and he didn't have a way to print out from the website links that they gave him. And when he went to Staples, they were gonna charge him $50, so I said, you know what, send me the links, if it's, I can't go into anybody's accounts or anything like that, but if it's something freely available on the website, you know, we go o, over and above to help people with this. So I printed them out for him and left him out on curbside pickup, and he was very grateful, and that helped him out, and, and we've had some other people bring their copies to the doors, we make the copies, and we don't charge them for it. So I feel like, you know, everything's so tough for people right now, it's, that's a small thing that we can do. Um, that's, you know, we're definitely, would like to continue do that, doing that probably, until people can come in, um, and, you know, and be able to use it themselves. Um, the lawn signs, so I just sent you a document of some of the lawn signs, I thought you might like to see some of the things that we post up there. It does get a lot of attention, um, they do take a little while to, to create, um, but really good use of the sign, I think, and people do notice it. I'll go to the bill schedules after, if you want to, I'll just kind of mention that we've been doing tremendous amount of weeding. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of time, I wish we were further along than we are, but it just takes a lot of time. So we still have more to do, we literally don't have enough room for the books, um, so we continue to work on it. I gave you this information about the grants from the cultural council, so these are the ones that were, um, that were awarded. Um, some of them were a partial award, um, but still, um, $4,000 is very generous from the cultural council, so I'm, I'm very pleased to have received that. And all of these were, uh, when I wrote the grants, it was conditional so that we can do it in-house or virtual, so I won't have to resubmit the conditions of the grant, we'll be able to make this work. Um, Valentine, uh, program in-house, um, this was, really only had up there a few days, and, you know, requested 89 packets, which was a little, a little tense trying to get all those done in that amount of time, but we did. And our, our APL site continues to receive a lot of hits, I just happened to be looking at it today, because I was uploading something. And in the last seven days, there were 185 hits on, just on our APL children's site, so that's been pretty constant. So people are definitely, you know, looking to see what we're doing, listening to the stories, and so forth. Um, upcoming programs, Wingmasters, um, we have, pretty certain we're gonna be able to do that outside, and so I'm looking into how to best make that happen, she's all for it, and, um, you know, we'll follow all, obviously, all the guidelines for outside, um, outside programs, but that will probably be in May, and it's looking like that will happen, as well as some other programs that I'm discussing with the presenters, how we can make that happen outside. I don't see us cramming people into the Miriam room anytime soon, and, you know, the Wingmasters always, it's a full house for them, so this would be, this is great. We have a rain date, and, you know, a lot of things, um, in place to make that happen. Um, the Deerfield Captives was one that I had reached out to Allison, and we had some great conversations, and I'm not sure that's gonna happen now, we kind of wanted it to happen in March, well, it was still cold and people would really relate, but it's not looked like it's gonna happen in March, but I'm gonna continue the conversation with her, because I think it's really a fascinating story, so we might end up doing it a little bit later. Um, the STEM virtual programs have been going well, um, we usually log in in the Miriam true, in the Miriam room, too, so we can see, we say hello to the kids, and then we just go off camera, because she's doing, you know, she's doing the programs with the, uh, with the STEM, she does a really great job. Um, we're trying to get our St. Patrick's Day in-house program, if you can see behind me, you know, this is sort of, we're trying to get all the packets ready, we got bogged down in some other things, and not as far ahead as we'd like, so hopefully we can get that out tomorrow. So that's pretty much, unless anybody has anything, oh, I did put in this document about the copier. Oh, I did put in this document about the copier services. So certainly that's something you can do as trustees, is, is to advocate for the library. It's, you know, we can help people. We, I find lots of creative ways to help people. One person was really upset. She wanted to come in and type up her letter. She had a really important letter she wanted to send out, and she didn't want to handwrite it. And, you know, I can't let her in. I can't, you know, get preferential treatment. So I said to her, "Write it out, put it in the book drop. I will go and get it. I will type it up for you, and I'll put it out for curbside." And she was thrilled. So we do find creative ways all the time to help people. So please encourage people to call me. I don't think there's anything we've had to turn away, except the man who wanted his bank documents, but I, I, he would have, I would have had to log into his bank account. And, you know, that's not going to happen. So please, that's certainly a valuable role of the Board of Trustees, is to have them contact us, contact me. We're more than happy to help people in any way we can. And so this copying service, you can just kind of read how that, you know, how that works. We haven't had a lot of requests, but we're certainly able to take care of them if they do. Anything?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to thank you for the time that you put in, because I noticed the sign outside. It's beautiful. And, and I also appreciate when you are talking about something like ceiling tiles and you include pictures, Jean. I just really appreciate that.
Sure, you're welcome. I have to give credit to Dave. Dave and I are a great team for the signs. We work together. He entered the software, and I'm making crazy, you know, the city's a little darker, Ed Purple over here. But, you know, we can really get them out there, you know, pretty quickly now. It's just a matter of, it can be, it can be complicated or challenging because you can only put so much text, or it gets too crowded. So we're always trying to condense the message and get what we can up there. Give full credit to Dave because he does a great job, you know, typing in the software.
Great. Thank you. And Jean, did you want to go over the bill schedule?
Well, I generally just answer questions if anybody has any specific question about anything on the bill schedule. Does anybody?
Does anyone in the board have any questions? Okay, it seems like we have no questions, Jean. Thank you very much. The, the last few items, I just wanted to, sorry.
Mary, I'm sorry. I was muted.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Nan.
I'm sorry. I was talking all the time about nothing. Our library ideas, just ideas or physical papers?
No, that's the Vox books. That's the name of the, yeah, that's, that's what that is.
Oh, that was, that was confusing. Okay.
Yeah, it's the name of the corporation, so.
Okay, before we leave the director's report, I have no more questions or comments about the March one. I need to go back to the February one. We weren't, we're not able to have a conversation about that. And one of the paragraphs really caught my eye. If you remember.
I don't have it in front of me, and I don't, not sure what you're going to ask me, but go ahead.
It's not, it's not really much of a question. It's just looking for an understanding of the correction. At some point in the February report, there was a paragraph, "Libraries in towns with fewer than 10,000 patrons do not have to have a director with an MLIS. And a permanent director can be hired with a bachelor's degree, no requirement to earn the MLIS." Well, I wanted to know why this was in there, or I was concerned that it was in there, because there are a number of incorrect pieces to it. In relation to Auburn, it's the 10,000, it's not patrons, it's population. And Auburn is certainly well with, within a 10,000 limit. And so the rest of the paragraph is of little interest, I think, to Auburn trustees. So that patron has to be corrected, and beyond that, I think the Mass General laws will suffice.
Okay, thank you. That is correct. It should say population, not patrons. So excuse me for that, that should say. And, you know, I have to say, the rest is, I'm just trying to give you a general overview of the library profession and things that are happening in the profession. I assume that you would be interested in just some of the generalities. And if you choose to have me exclude them, I guess I could do that as well. You know, there's masses and masses and masses of information that come to me every day, from ALA, from CW Mars, from MBLC, and all the areas within those as well. And it's a lot. And so I just made an assumption you would want to know a little bit about the profession and where it's going, and what kinds of issues that are, you know, are, are faced in the profession. So, I mean, all towns are, are part of it. So, but if you prefer that I don't include that, I'm okay with that.
No, I'm not saying I don't want.
Patrons instead of public, so, I'm, instead of population, so that's correct.
I found that very scary is, is my best word, I guess, because Auburn does have less than 10,000 patrons. And at that point, I felt, wow, where were we headed? So I had to get some extra information on that. And Mass General laws are, again, adequate. Auburn is not in the danger of having a permanent director without an MLIS.
Sure, I will also, I, that's fine. Thank you for your comments. We actually do have more than 10,000 patrons at my last count. I think we did. I'm not sure. They do, uh, CW Mars does, uh, they clear them every two years, I believe. So I'm not sure what the final number is. So, but we're, we're up there. We're certainly, you know, and we have, you know, you're right, the town has 16,000 something for a population, so.
No, that was just a scary paragraph for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nan. Go ahead, Matt.
Nan, thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that. I'm glad, I didn't see that. I, when I saw the last part of that sentence, I just stopped looking at it. So I appreciate that we're able to follow up and find out what the accurate number is. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions for Jean? Thank you, Jean. We just have a few more items. The next item is Friends, the 501(c)(3) reinstatement. Any updates, Matt?
Well, yes, we had a nice upstate, update.
Great.
Paula was able to write the check out. IRS requires that $600 check that we approved at our last meeting in January. And so that has been sent. Now, that, that's only been about three weeks, maybe four. There were about 50 pages, and we had to have the person who's the president and the vice president and treasurer and clerk, everybody sign their papers with that. That's been sent off, but it could take as long as three months and as long, or six months, before we get a response from the IRS. But at least all the paperwork is ready for that.
Excellent. Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Paula?
And I, Mary, I just wanted to thank Matt because Matt was the, um, he was the feet of this task. I just simply was the signature and, and write the check. He, he did a lot of, uh, one-on-one with Phil Shea and a lot of back and forth with paperwork, so he deserves the credit.
Great, great. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Paula. The next item on the agenda, the diversity, equity, and inclusion. We already voted on it, and I made the, made the changes. We, the, the request was to add the word equity to the title. The, the copy that I sent everyone didn't have that, but I just wondered if anybody had any edits that you needed to make to it other than it adding the, the word equity in the, in the title and the language?
I think it's good.
I do, too. Very good. So move to the next item. Youth survey. Dr. Casey Handfield was kind enough to get back to me, and he said, "Anytime that we have a survey to, to send, he's, he, he will send it out." Matt and I had a conversation because I, I wanted to, the, the survey. I wanted to know how, what type of a survey we would send, whether we would send the same one. And Matt, can you kind of pick up the, the ball there? I know that you emailed Barbara. And basically, I know that we have the completed survey from 2019, but I wanted to see if you had any comments about to create another survey. My experience this week was, I did receive Barbara's, the cumul, the, um, the cumulative survey with all the results. And I did look at Survey Monkey in terms of like looking for different formats for, um, using a survey, what I wasn't comfortable with in Survey Monkey is it says that, that Survey Monkey shares the data with a third party, and it was very not specific. Where, where we would be surveying teenagers, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. So Matt, I was wondering if you had any input in terms of moving forward with another survey? You, you mentioned the questions 15 and 16 in the original survey? Like, maybe we just want to survey the kids on one specific part of the, of, of, of the ser, of the, um, the youth survey?
I, I, in my opinion on this thing is, and I don't know what anybody else thinks, the general survey is not going to change much in this short period of time, you know, to those questions, nor probably their interest in actually completing it, because we only had about 220, I shouldn't say only, that's a lot, 220 out of the 860 that actually completed it. But I do think that it might be useful to be able to ask students who are interested, and questions 15 and 16, let me just get that. That's, "Feel free to share any additional info, suggestions you have for the Auburn Public Library, and how it can improve its teen offering collections program services over the next five years." So there's, there's a possibility of getting maybe something new, I don't know. And then question 16 is just to learn how, is to ask them if they'd be willing to participate in a focus group.
Okay.
And now that they're all used to doing Zoom, and so are we for the, or go-to-meeting, whichever. Maybe just those two questions, which would not take an awful lot to be able to, I mean, there's nothing, well, there is privacy in terms of asking for those who wanted to participate. We'd, they'd have to get a name and an email.
Right.
And I don't know whether that's protected or not. I, I have no way of knowing. But then, with that information, we'd be able to arrange, or somebody could be able to arrange a, a focus group with, with young people and ask questions, talk about, we'd have plenty of time as a, as a board to figure out which questions we'd want to ask them in a focus group.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
What anyone else thinks on that.
Again, he was very open to, he said, "Send me a survey, and I'll make it happen." I can reach out again and ask him if I could get, you know, volunteers for a focus group.
Yeah, that would be excellent. Have to worry about it.
Yeah, I think so. I like the way that you pointed out just those two specific questions. That could also be something that we could survey, a very brief survey, but just to get it updated.
Sure, sure.
Does anybody else have any input? So I will, so if, go ahead.
I think brief is better. You're more likely to get them to answer two questions than you are 16 or 20.
I agree. I agree. Very good. So I'll reach out again and let him know that we need a, for, a, a very brief survey regarding those two questions, and just to follow up volunteers for a focus group. Next item, Matt, you, you had on the, um, update on strategic plan goals. Is there any evidence-based assessment of, of the virtual programming? So I guess, is that?
That's probably a question we'd have to ask Julie, and then I don't even know what, if it answered that question or not.
Okay. Well, is that, is that for Julie or Jean, or both?
Well, I guess it's to Julie.
Okay, so.
Hi, can you just, I'm sorry. What's the question?
The question was, is there any evidence-based assessment of the virtual, virtual programming that we're offering?
I, I would have to look into that.
I think it's really a question for Jean, not for Julie.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I, I, I'm not able to answer that on the spot right now. But I mean, if there's, if there's, I, I can say we probably have data on how many people actually participate in some of our programs or feedback. But, and I apologize, I didn't realize that you had a question for me, Matt. I would have been prepared for it. I'll talk to Jean about it. I'm sorry. I'd rather not answer than give you the wrong answer, so.
That's, okay. Jean, did you want, did you have anything you want to add?
Well, I, I'll, I guess Julie and I will talk, I will say I'm not, you're asking a very, very broad question. Evidence-based assessments versus, it's probably all still in early stages in terms of COVID and how all of these are working out. I think you'd have to do some heavy research, and there's probably a lot of sort of grassroots kind of, you know, I see them all the time, kind of within the directors, what we're talking about. You're looking at a major research project, I guess. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. In terms of just for us, I mean, you, you can do, you know, evidence-based is really, can just be almost subjective a lot of times. We look and create every single program. I choose the presenters very, very carefully. We definitely assess. And so we don't write a major report on it. There's, you can't spend all your time writing reports, but that certainly helps drive who we have and what, you know, what the balance is for program types. So in terms, if you're looking for major research articles, I mean, that would be a research project for somebody. So I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for either.
I think we put that in strategic plan. It has simply to do with people participating in a program. What evidence do we have that that was an effective program, a useful program? It's not, you, that with five questions, it's evidence. It's not how they feel, but what they believe they got from it, what they learned from it. What are the objectives, and how were they met? That's all. It's, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, we're, we're doing that in the, in the Culture Committee, Matt. We're, we're asking for kind of feedback on how the program went. So, and sort of to ask our, our recipients to be able to reach out. So I hear you. So you're basically talking about just feedback on how, how things went.
Yeah, but it's, it's a typical question. If you had, every program must have learning objectives or goals.
Right, right, right.
To see if you've met those goals by the five or six que, you don't have to do 25 questions.
Right, right.
Ask two questions and get enough information to know that this program is effective, it met its goals.
Well said. Anybody have anything else on that? The last, the last thing, Matt, you wanted to talk about the web jump junction information share?
You know, actually, you can put that on some other agenda. I don't feel like it's.
Okay, okay. Very good. So does anybody have anything else before we motion to close the meeting? The next scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, at 6:30. Can I have a motion to close the meeting? Suzette, can I have a second motion?
Second.
I will.
Second. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Julie, for being here tonight. Thank you, Jean.
Thanks. I just want to thank the board for moving it to six. I know you always meet at 6:30. We're grateful you did that. I wanted Ed to explain everything to you, and he wouldn't have been able to make it at 6:30, so many thanks for doing that.
Yeah, it was great. It was great.
It was good to hear.
It was. And, and I want to thank, I want to tell you how professional, spoke to him. I just really appreciated that. I, since you're his boss, I wanted to relay that to you. So we will close the meeting.
That was good to hear. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I know you do. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.